Thank you. Welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter thirty eight, Section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the Lawrence City Council for the city of Lawrence, Mass. is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and or view this meeting while in progress by use of Facebook and YouTube web access sites referenced below, which is the Facebook Lawrence City Council page and the Lawrence City Council YouTube page as well as a Zoom address. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meetings designated for public comment by use of the web and phone access that I just mentioned to you. So, Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Estela Reyes?
President.
Counselor Rodriguez? Counselor Rodriguez? Noted. Counselor De La Cruz?
Present.
Counselor Payano? Counselor Payano? Noted. Counselor Abdo?
Present.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Present.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Present.
Counselor Levy? Counselor Levy? Noted. And Counsel President LaPlante?
Present. At this point, I'm recognizing we have a quorum. At this point, I'm going to recognize Counselor David Abdo, who wishes to introduce the moment of silence this evening. Counselor Abdo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I would ask that we bow our heads for a moment of silence in memory of Patrolman Thomas Duggan, Thomas J. Duggan, Senior, who passed away thirty-one years ago this day. Mr. Duggan, Patrolman Duggan was a Lawrence Police Officer that who had served honorably for eighteen years before he was struck down in the line of duty. And I ask tonight that we remember this, this man that was struck down at a young age protecting the people of Lawrence and left a family behind and did so thirty-one years ago today. So I ask for that moment of silence dedicated in his memory. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rabdo. At this point, would you please rise during me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. We could stand.
On their show on the guard.
Under God, end of his bond.
Thank you very much, members of the city council. We had a full meeting this evening. Before we get started, I just want to do a little bit of housekeeping as we as we get going. I do expect that we are going to have a full roster of people who wish to speak during public participation. If you're everyone at this point is on, I am, we, our council rules restrict or have parameters to the amount of time that we can use for public participation, and that time is thirty minutes. So what we're going to do at this point in the chat feature, I'm going to encourage you to go ahead and put your name down and address if you can, and then, and then at that point, I'm going to go ahead and we're just going to take down the individuals in order. And then we're going to have a hard stop at thirty minutes so that we can continue on with the rest of the city's business. So at this point, I would encourage you, if you wish to speak tonight, to go right to the chat feature and put your name on there, and then I will identify you as we go forward. The second part of the housekeeping is that you may all be aware at this point that we've ordered a special meeting to deal with the city clerk's position for this Thursday. So we do have an item on the agenda for this evening. However, what we're going to be doing with that is that we're just going to essentially do a committee report, very simple, just offer a motion and then a motion to table right after that. So that we're going to save some time. Not talk about that this evening and then go to and then deal with the city clerk position in detail on Thursday. So at this point, we're going to go to public participation. I'm going to go into the chat and see where the first person, first person I see on here is Mr. Mali, Amun Malik.
Good evening, honorable members. From Amun Malik, fifty-three Chester Street. We, the citizens, are proud and united behind the great honor of Henry Vasquez. In a short time, he has created centers for COVID-nineteen vaccination of our citizen, forming Human Rights Commission, taking steps for repair of the museum square. Honorable Henry Vasquez is a great, great leader. We are united behind him. Our city are proud to support the best police department, Lawrence Police Department and their union. We need contract for our police officers. Lawrence Police Department with the impeccable leadership by honorable Roy Bass has done excellent job to protect our citizen. Contract for Lawrence Police now. The news of Honorable Officer Fitzpatrick became the Officer of the Year. Make every citizen in Lawrence proud. Thank you, Lawrence Police. Blue lives matter. In this darkest era of human history, the DPW workers sacrificed their life for making Lawrence a better city. We must support our DPW worker and the union. We are grateful to Honorable Superintendent Cynthia Paris in this hard time for working with her teacher to educate our children. Our great city, that this proud immigrant city will rise up against COVID-nineteen global crisis. We are united to say contract for Lawrence Police Officers now. Support our firefighters and their union. Lawrence always is strong. Lawrence always unite. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mali. One of the things that I failed to mention earlier is that you have two and a half minutes to speak. Please don't mention any city councils by name, but address the entire city council. And the next person I see is Mr. Armon Bonano. You're up, sir.
Thank you, Chairman LaPlante. Good evening, councilors. I just want to summarize an email that I sent all of you earlier today. I, as a resident of Lawrence since nineteen sixty-six and a U.S. citizen, naturalized U.S. citizen since eighty-five, I have long history here in the city and roots in the city. I am of Italian heritage, and I want to speak tonight briefly on the consideration of eliminating Columbus Day. I, I am opposed to doing so, and I hope that the council will take into consideration that that opposition doesn't mean that I'm opposed to Indigenous People's Day. I feel strongly that Columbus Day is tied to Italian-American heritage and represents our long history. The origin of Columbus Day actually goes back over a hundred years to a lynching of Italians in New Orleans. So what is happening in some cities or issues today was faced a hundred years ago, two hundred years ago. And I'd like to mention that if this is considered, that a public hearing be held, I personally found out a couple of days ago. I hope that the council lets the public decide this or has public input rather than having the council consider a resolution. So in closing, I, I just think that both sides, all sides need to be heard on this issue. The little that I've read, I don't think that all sides have been heard. And I think our story as an immigrant city will be less if we do not hear all sides. And it's a question of learning from history, not pretending to change history. So I thank you for the opportunity to address you. I hope that you will find inspiration in what I say and the reason I say it, and I thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker tonight is Mr. Richard Russell.
Can you hear me, Council President?
You have the floor, Mr. Russell.
Okay. Good evening, councils. My name is Richard Russell, registered voter at thirty-four Cross Street in Lawrence. My main issue tonight is the way that our council is going to handle several issues on tonight's agenda. It is my understanding that the council, uh, hold on a second. Okay, we're better. It's my understanding that the council will be holding public hearing on agenda items regarding the proposed charter changes and proposed resolution and or ordinance on changing of the Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I would like to ask you in the nicest way possible to table both of these items until the council chambers are open to the public to allow the voters of Lawrence to give you face-to-face input on both of these subjects. Not for nothing, but virtual meetings through the virtue of Zoom only provide one thing, and that is that the Lawrence City Council has found a way to put zoo back into Zoom meetings. Back in two thousand and ten, the city council began their ten, their ten-year charter review. For a variety of reasons, that review remained tabled for about seven or eight years before it was finally removed from the agenda. Delaying the completion of the public hearing by several weeks or months is, in my humble opinion, not going to cause any serious issues unless, of course, some councils are looking to make sure that the four-year terms get passed by the state legislature in time for the November election to ensure that they have an easy, no heavy lifting for fifteen thousand K a year job for walking around money. As for changing the name of Columbus Day, all that I will say right now is that Columbus was working for Queen Isabella, the Queen of Spain. Columbus opened the door for a myriad of Spaniards who claimed that they were explorers, while in reality, they were nothing but a group of individuals who rape, pillaged, and plundered the natives of Southern, North America, Central America, and South America. With that being said, I would like to remind you that this is an election year, so please act accordingly. I hope to be back with comments during the public hearings on the above-mentioned subjects. Thank you, as always, for the time.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else's name listed in the chat segment. I do see somebody who has raised their hand, some of the name of owner. If you wish to speak at this time during public participation, sir, now is, or ma'am, now is your time.
Thank you. My name is Frank Muzelier, and I am a former Lawrence resident, very proud of that. Lawrence is my, my home. I love Lawrence. I love the people who used to live there, and I love the people who live there now. Today, you were seated in a sacred place. To many Laurentians who are from Lawrence, City Hall is very special. In many ways, it was out of City Hall that Italian-Americans received a great deal of help in times of trouble. Please respect our Columbus tradition. In fact, despite the revisionist rhetoric of Marxists who defend, who defame him, recent research by respected historians proves that Columbus was truly a good man, worth honoring. Today, he is falsely accused of genocide. Yet genocide is an intentional attempt to wipe out another people. Genocide is not the accidental clash of microbes. And when it comes to slavery, evidence shows that slavery was existing at the dawn of time. And as a matter of fact, slavery unfortunately existed in Latin America hundreds of years before Christopher Columbus ever left Spain. The fact of the matter is that Columbus ended cannibalism. He ended human sacrifice and brought Christ to Latin America. Please save Columbus Day in Lawrence. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Muzaglia, just for our clerk, would you please just spell your last name for the record?
Yes, it is capital M-A-Z-Z-A-G-L-I-A.
And your address, please, sir.
One five seven Old Upton Road, Grafton, Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person I see is Louis Santiago.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, City Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm a Laurentian who was born and raised in the city of Lawrence. I'm a homeowner in nine Bandegrave Street here in Lawrence, Mass. I've actually wanted to take the time to introduce myself as I am considering the position of the city clerk. I have applied on the website, which states that the position is still open and will remain that way till the position is filled. I'm a veteran who served our country honorably in time of war. I'm a product of my environment. I have a purpose, a commitment, and a motivation to the city, the public, the residents, and constituents. I asked the council to take into consideration my application and my resume to please open the pool for me to interview for the city clerk's position. I, I would love the opportunity to not only serve our, our, our public and citizens of Lawrence, but I believe my skills, my experience, my knowledge would be an asset for the city of Lawrence. I, I ask you to please consider me as an applicant. I'm, I'm a, I'm a director of Veteran Services for the city of Hable. I have administration skills that I believe that would be a benefit to the records department as the city clerk. I'm also the Massachusetts Veteran Service Officer Secretary and have a lot of knowledge on the administrator side when it comes to meetings and agendas. I, I, I want to take this opportunity to thank you, and I yield back to you, Mr. President, in hope that you considered my application and my resume.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santiago. I don't see anybody else's name of looking to address the council during public participation. I'm going to give one quick sweep. If you do wish you're on, if you do wish to address the city council, now is the time. Please make yourself known. Hearing done, the public participation section of this meeting is now closed. The city clerk has recorded all the, all the comments made this evening with the names, addresses, and brief summary of the comments, and those will now be part of our city council record. At this point, it was an oversight. I'm looking to see if we can adopt the minutes for March the second, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion?
To move.
And seconded discussion. Hearing done, Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Abdo? Counselor Abdo?
Yes.
Counselor Payano? Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor President LaPlante?
Yes. Motion, motion passes. At this time, we are going to start with the public hearings. The first public hearing is document thirty-nine nineteen Handicap Parking on Bennington Street. Clerk, please read the public hearing notice.
His notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P.M. at a public meeting conducted by electronic means with public viewing, listening, participation, and input provided remotely in compliance with public gathering limitations in effect. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to revised ordinances of the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following new paragraph to Section ten point thirty-six point three four zero of the municipal code, handicap parking, to be inserted in the proper alphabetical order. Bennington Street, West Side, from a point fifty feet northerly of the intersection of Chestnut Street to a point ninety feet northerly to the intersection of Chestnut Street. To the extent that there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
The public hearing is now open. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Hearing in the public comment period is now closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve and change the name of Sonia Guzman since Catherine Torres is no longer at that address and waive the thirty days.
Motion made by the chair of the ordinance committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. Discussion? Hearing done, Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor Abdo?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor President LaPlante?
Yes. Motion carries. The next document is document forty nineteen Handicap Parking on Bennington Street. Clerk, please read the public hearing notice.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, just want to note that the public hearing notice, you know, as we pay by the inch printed, we did document thirty-nine, forty, and forty-two as a one posting with the street width, just because it's three spots in a row. So it's the same notice. I don't know if you want me to read it all three times or?
Let me ask the membership, is there any objection to the, to the clerk just providing at this point, because the hearing notice has already been read, just the, the meets and bounds? I'm not hearing any objection to that. So the public hearing is now open for document forty nineteen. Again, to anything street. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak on this matter?
Counsel President, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Attorney Ruano.
Um, I just wanted to confirm with something because I know that there were three requests for the handicap parking. So the ordinance that I believe was drafted was only for two spots because Catherine Torres no longer needed it. But if I understand Counselor Reyes's amendment, it sounds like there is nevertheless a third person that needs it. So if that's the case, then the proposed ordinance language may need to be amended as well. Because like I said, I think every every handicap spot is twenty feet in length. So if you see or hear the book that was posted, I believe is only forty feet in length. So it would need to be amended to sixty feet in length if, in fact, the council desires to have three handicap parking spaces in front of two Bennington Street.
Thank you very much, Attorney Ruano. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to look for some guidance from our ordinance committee chair, not only she that chair, but this is also in her district. Madam Chair, you, you've heard the, the attorney's recommendations. How would you like to proceed?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Rano. Yes, we do need three, three space. So I think we just have to amend instead of forty, it's going to be four sixty. So I think it does, that's the way we should go.
Attorney Ruano, do you see any objections or any men that would, that we should not consider it in that manner?
No, I don't see any. I would just ask, I know that the clerk just did not read it. If she can read it again, I could provide the language if someone would like to amend it.
Okay, just so the chair is clear, are we looking to reread the thirty-nine nineteen or the forty nineteen document?
They were, they were published as a block.
Okay, so with this.
So the language is for all three of them.
Okay, so at this point, we're not going to, let's be on the safe side. Clerk, please read the public hearing notice for forty nineteen.
Sure, Counsel President, I'm going to read the meets and bounds first, and then I'll read the whole thing. But I, I think what people want to hear is this Bennington Street, West Side, from a point fifty feet northerly of the intersection of Chestnut Street to a point ninety feet northerly of the intersection of Chestnut Street. I think the attorney's trying to say is that we would be saying Bennington Street, West Side, from a point thirty feet northerly of the intersection of Chestnut Street to a point ninety feet northerly to the intersection of Chestnut Street, which would give you the full sixty feet that you needed, supposed to the forty feet that was posted.
And my last question before we move on this is, are all of these numbers, are they, have they all been published? So this is the public has an opportunity to know exactly what we're voting for this evening?
The document as published read document thirty-nine, document forty, and document forty-two, all of two thousand and nineteen. So all three document numbers were posted on the public hearing.
And they all posted with all the meets and bounds for the entire distance that is, as I said, is that correct?
Well, the additional twenty feet that we're adding now would not have been part of that because that was not how the attorney drafted it. We drafted it for forty feet because she reached out to one of the applicants who said they no longer wanted the spot. But it sounds like the counselor also reached out to the new homeowner who says they do want the spot.
I think the chair believes that, just on the safe side, what we need to make sure is that whatever it is that is we're voting on, it needs to have been published. And so if that additional twenty, I don't think we can do it right here without the public knowing that. And just to be on the safe side, the chair will rule that we just vote on those items that were published. So with some guidance from the clerk, was thirty nineteen, that information was published with the, with the meets and bounds or not? The proper meeting.
They were, the meets and bounds was for two parking spots. All three of them had the same meets and bounds, which was the thirty-nine, the forty, and the forty-two, which was the fifty feet to the ninety feet. So I, I think what you're asking is whoever would have gotten the twenty feet to the fifty feet, excuse me, the thirty feet to the fifty feet, that, that first twenty-foot spot, you would presume that would go document number thirty-nine, but we don't know that for a fact, like.
Okay.
No one owns a handicap parking spot on the street. Anyone could use them. So there would be three in front of the property, and three people have placards. So they're all looking for one. We'll have two placards in front of the house for three spots.
So that's fine. So again, just to be again, clear, we could go forward with two of these, and the third one, we probably need to re-put a public hearing for the additional, for the additional twenty feet. Does that make sense? Is that accurate? It makes sense?
Well, I don't. I'm sorry. I don't think it's required, but it makes sense if that's what you want to do. Like in.
Madam Chair of the ordinance committee?
So at this point, what we are going to do is just to be in the safe size, as you has mentioned it. We're just going to go with the two. No, with the three. So we're just going to be with two, and then I work with the third space later. So we're going to go with two.
Okay, so thirty-nine nineteen is going as, because that, those numbers work. Forty nineteen, we can go with that one because those numbers work. And then with forty-two nineteen, there'll need to be some tweaking and some changes. And then we can, Madam Chair, you'll work to make sure that that's good to go, perhaps as early as our next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor President?
Yes.
Can I make one suggestion? I apologize. I don't mean to interrupt, but.
That's okay.
The petitioner who asked for thirty-nine nineteen is the person that moved away. So in the person that applied for forty and the person that applied for forty-two, they still live there. So it might be more appropriate to pass forty and forty-two and maybe withdraw or table thirty-nine or deny thirty-nine, but forty and forty-two, the same petitioners that still live there are the ones. So if you're going to not approve one tonight, I think thirty-nine would be the one to not approve.
Thank you.
Can I just tap on to that as well? Because I think that the, the person that we are amending for thirty-nine, I don't think there's anything on the record that, A, they're requesting it, or B, that they have a placard. The, the, I, the documents associated with thirty-nine are for another individual.
Okay, so Madam Chair, again, I defer to you for this. This is your district, your committee. So what we could, Madam Chair, is we could certainly, we can certainly take a motion to reconsider thirty-nine nineteen and then make a motion to lay it on the table. Then we can go forward with forty and forty-two nineteen as is written. Does that work?
The motion is to withdraw thirty-nine dash nineteen. I work with that leader.
So Madam Chair, we already have forty nineteen on the table right now, so let's dispense with that one. And then I can go and do forty-two, and then let's go back for finally, we can make motion or reconsider thirty-nine nineteen. Does that, does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Please, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I would like to expand the conversation on this matter because I thought this is the housing, the housing committee that is also involved. And I was looking into it and I, and I see that they don't have any parking, handicap parking around for people that actually need it. So they have a spot, but they're not, they're not handicapped. So that is a way that we can actually send a letter to the housing committee to consider a few spots on that area because I mean by converting the parking, the regular parking into a handicap, we're going to definitely limit it, people that live on those, on those projects to actually park around because the, and then the other side of the street, there is no parking allowed. So there is a very limited amount of parking around there.
If it's okay, I do, I do appreciate those comments. Why don't we do this? Let's open up, let's do the public hearing notice for forty nineteen. Let's read the notice. Let's open up the public hearing. And let's close the public hearing. Let's have a motion. Then we can have discussion. Mr. Rodriguez, at that point, if you want to make some sort of amendment or whatever you want to do at that point, Housing Committee, whatever is, that will be in order. So if there's no further discussion, clerk, please read the public hearing notice for forty nineteen.
Notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM at a public meeting conducted by electronic means with public viewing, listening, participation, and input provided remotely in compliance with public gathering limitations in effect. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment or the revised ordinance of the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding, following new paragraph to section ten point thirty-six point three four zero of the municipal code, handicap parking to be inserted in proper alphabetical order. Bennington Street west side from a point fifty feet northerly of the intersection of Chestnut Street to a point ninety feet northerly to the intersection of Chestnut Street. To the extent that there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Thank you, clerk. The public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Hearing on, the public hearing is now closed. Counselor, what is your pleasure? Madam Chair?
Motion to approve and waive the thirty days.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, discussion. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I just wanted to offer a friendly amendment to the, to the item to also include a letter to the Housing Committee to expand the conversation around parking, handicap parking on that building.
Madam Chair, do you wish to accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes, I can, but I do have information about the building owner, I mean, the applicants and the reason why they not be getting handicap parking through the housing. So I can get in touch with Counselor Rodriguez if he hears sec before, yes, like the amendments and just to pass that information.
No, I mean, I know that we discussed this before, but an official letter haven't been sent. And once they see the actual board, the housing board, once, once they receive a letter from us asking to reconsider that opinion, they might change their mind. Because I know that the manager and everybody else around housing, they, they not allowing it. But the board probably is not aware. So the letter is going to be directed to the board and they probably not going to consider it, but at least we did our duties of expanding the conversation, expanding, open the conversation about that matter.
I will accept that amendment.
And the amendment has now been accepted as part of the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing on, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Councilor Abdo?
Yes.
Councilor Payano?
Yes.
Councilor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Council President La Pla?
Yes, the motion carries. We are now going to do forty-two nineteen and then we're going to go back to reconsider thirty-nine. Forty-two nineteen, handicap parking on Bennington Street. Clerk, please read the entire public hearing notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM at a public meeting conducted by electronic means with public viewing, listening, participation, and input provided remotely in compliance with public gathering limitations in effect. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendments to the revised ordinances of the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following new paragraphs to section ten point thirty-six point three four zero of the municipal code. Handicap parking to be inserted in proper alphabetical order. Bennington Street west side from a point fifty feet northerly of the intersection of Chestnut Street to a point ninety feet northerly of the intersection of Chestnut Street. To the extent there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
The public hearing is now open. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Hearing on, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, what is your, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve and waive the thirty days.
Motion made by Counselor Chair. Selena Reyes, seconded by Counselor Jorge Gonzalez, discussion. Hearing on, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Councilor Payano?
Yes.
Councilor Abdo?
Yes.
Councilor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilor Levy? Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Council President La Pla?
Yes, motion carries. Is there a motion to reconsider document thirty-nine nineteen for the purposes of tabling?
Everybody voted in favor of it, so who can reconsider?
Everybody voted in favor and you must be on the prevailing side. Anybody can make this motion.
Some more.
Motion made by Counselor Rodriguez, there is a second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Estela Reyes, discussion. Hearing on, this is a motion to reconsider. And then the motion is then, part of the motion is to table. Are we all clear on the motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Councilor Abdo?
Yes.
Councilor Payano?
Yes.
Councilor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Council President La Pla?
Their votes in affirmative. I'm going to look for a Counselor, Attorney, City Attorney, Ruano on this. Would we be in order at this point, only because we're looking to extend that meets and boundaries for that to Bennington? That perhaps it may have been a rush to go into table, but actually to order a public hearing with the addition, additional meets and bounds, would that be in order? Would that be the proper way to address this?
I mean, you can order another public hearing, but I, I think generally, whatever is posted, doesn't have to be exactly what's adopted by city council. I think that happens all the time. So you can make an amendment to it right now. I think the point of the public hearing and the public notice is just to alert the public that this is happening. But you know, as a, as a bigger example, you know, we, we post the city budget, the one that's submitted by the mayor. And then obviously that is rarely, I mean, sometimes it's exactly as adopted, but a lot of times it can be changed by city council. But simply because you make an amendment doesn't mean that you have to republish it and reorder a public hearing. If that is what you would like to do though, it is well within your purview. My only suggestion was that the documents associated with that item in, in no way referenced the actual tenant there. So there is no information for, to the public on who's requesting it and if they in fact meet the necessity for a space. It, it, all the documents associated with thirty-nine slash nineteen are for a different individual who no longer works, I mean, excuse me, who no longer lives there. So that was my only comment, but like I said, if, if you would like to order another public hearing, you can do that. If you want to table it so that you can gather the correct documents, I don't believe that it has to be republished or a new public hearing has to be. The city council is well within its rights to make any amendment so long as it already has been published and a public hearing has already been ordered and helped.
Very good. So with that guidance, of course, Counselor Reyes, you can work and then put this back on the city council agenda with the proper name and we're good to go.
Yeah.
So I think we're- Who just asked for recognition? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes, sir. How can I help?
I wonder into see if we can make a motion to reopen the public hearing and table it at that level. That way, once we make a determination or gather more documents, we can reopen the same public hearing as we have today for the other documents.
Tell me to-
And take it as, as a block, probably. Is that probably legal? I don't know, Ruano, is that okay?
City Attorney, do you have any comments or recommendations on that suggestion?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, the public hearing has already been noticed for today. So it makes sense to go ahead and have the public hearing today. And like I said, I don't think that it would need to be republished with any amendments. Like I said, you can make the amendments and then hold off on voting until you get the proper documents.
So this item is currently tabled. If somebody wishes to take it back off the table to do and do that, that's fine. Or we can just have the city, the Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee simply put the name on there. So the floor is open for a recommendation or a motion, or else we're going to move to the next item.
I just feel like we should leave a table for now. Just leave a table for now and then I'm going to work with whatever documentation I need to bring for the next city council meeting.
Thank you very much, Counsel.
Thank you, Counselor Rodriguez. Thank you.
The next item tonight is document twenty-six twenty, city charter review put on by former city council president and current mayor Kendris Vazquez. Clerk, please read the public hearing notice.
I guess that is somebody that is not muted.
Yes, and that continues, I'm going to have to unfortunately mute that person manually. But go ahead, Madam, City Clerk, Assistant Clerk.
Document number twenty-six dash twenty, notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM at a public meeting conducted by electronic means with public viewing, listening, participation, and input provided remotely in compliance with public gathering limitations in effect. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a series of proposed amendments to the charter for the city of Lawrence pursuant to section ten point one B of the charter to save Lawrence regarding periodic review of the city charter during every year ending in zero. Upon the approval of any such changes, the city council, by publicly notes its intention to then petition the Senate and House of Representatives and the General Court assembled for the adoption and ratification of any and all charter changes. Description provided here is a summary and is to be considered as a notice of the public hearing scheduled before the Lawrence City Council on the date and at the time provided above. Copy of the proposed amendments and all documents filed with regard to said amendments are available for examination, viewing, in copy at the Office of the City Clerk, City Hall, two hundred Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. Any business day during hours of eight thirty AM to four thirty PM is also available at the city city council public hearing website located at www.cityoflawrence.com, document center forward slash index forward slash one sixty-four. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Thank you very much. The public hearing for this document is now open. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter?
I would. I would like-
Please identify yourself with your name and address, please, for the record.
Okay, my name, Richard Russell, I'm still a registered voter at thirty-four Cross Street. I apologize if some of my comments seem disjointed and be a little out of date due to the fact of the ordinance committee meeting last week, but again, so be it. I apologize for it. I have these listed by various sections. Section two, where you're talking about amending the length of terms for the counselors. That needs some serious clarification for the public regarding two or four year terms for whom, okay? Also, why didn't the council include a period of absence from elected office to prevent individuals from doing a methooing, jumping from school committee to city council and back to school committee? Prevent them from jumping from two consecutive terms in one office to run for election in another council office? Next, in section five, you mention three members, three member standing committees. If one member is absent, you still have a quorum. However, it's my understanding that Robert's Rules of Order may prohibit the chairman of a committee from making motions and or seconding them. How effective is that for committee work? Continuing on to section ten, what safeguards are there against nepotism and favoritism in handing out temporary jobs by the city council? Section twelve, you mentioned public hearing notices will be posted on the city website. Well, my humble opinion, the city needs to do some serious work on making these notices more readily accessible to the general public. Some of us know where this information is usually hidden. A lot of citizens, citizens are not savvy with the inadequacies of the city website. Section nineteen, why the change from five to twelve percent of signatures? Isn't this going to add work to an already understaffed and overworked city clerk and election department? In section twenty-one, you mentioned as fifteen percent of the registered voters is the required minimum number of signatures on a recall petition. First, you haven't clearly stated which officials are recallable and the timeframes to be required clearly enough. And second, if a district councilor were to be recalled, does that require fifteen percent of the registered voters in the city? Or just fifteen percent of the voters in the district? Continuing on, I and a lot of others would like to see counselors dock for missed meetings and subcommitment committee meetings unless they have a valid excuse. Last and most importantly, I take it as a slap in the face to the citizens of Lawrence that only you, the counselors, have the expertise to be the only ones to be able to come up with suggested changes to our city charter that supposedly for the benefit of the residents of the city. Furthermore, to conduct these meetings on this issue while operating under the governor's exemption to the open meeting law flies in the face of our American rights. Why was there no outcry when the twenty-ten charter review was never finished? I can't see any problem with the charter review being tabled till Governor Baker opens, opens meeting law restrictions are lifted and real honest to goodness to face public hearings in the city council chamber can be held. If you desire to continue with Zoom public hearing on this, it only goes to you, the council. At least some of you have no concern for the citizens as this would be the second time in over two months that you railroaded something through the council without providing the citizens of Lawrence a proper forum to express their concerns. As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there any else, members of the public who wish to speak on this matter?
Mr. La Pla, I would like to speak as a public-
Counselor De La Cruz, you really want to speak at the public hearing for the public or you can speak as a city counselor when we, when we close this public hearing?
I want to speak as a public person.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Council President, I couldn't understand.
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. As a citizen of the city of Lawrence, Maria De La Cruz, twenty-six Summit Avenue, Lawrence, Mass. I see that the shadow review on section one, they saying that people that you could leave hundred and eighty days immediately after the preceding election. I think that it should be before, because if I don't live in a district, how come my voters are going to vote for me? He said, proceed, hundred and eighty days immediately preceding their election. I think should be a word there that he says before people be elected to be leaving that location, hundred and eighty days before that. uh that location hundred and eighty days before that. Um session three, three point four is the qualification for serve. After you have been convicted, I think we have people in this city that has been uh running people who has been convicted already. And is that before people get convicted or is that after people get convicted? Then we have to look at those two. Um we would like to uh go back to three point one. Though, and I a member of the community that people are moving from one place to go when they want to be effective. And I do ask that we make that people live in their premise hundred and eighty days before, not after. Thank you.
Thank you. Or is there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Here we done. The public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what is your pleasure?
As the president, I would like to uh table the matter and uh consider reopening the public here once we uh um once we go back to in-person meetings.
There's a motion to table. Is there a second? Um I thought I heard Counselor De La Cruz with the second.
Counsel President, just an informational piece. Uh I think it's important that you note that um what folks might have read, uh and I think you said this at the last meeting, what folks read from a month ago or maybe a little bit more than a month ago, uh that wasn't the actual document that was sent.
There is, there is, uh this is now completely out of order. You can certainly vote against the motion to table and then we can have a discussion, but at this point.
I will draw my motion for open for discussion.
Motion has been withdrawn. What is the motion now?
So so counsel president.
What? Yes, Mr. Piana, what is your motion?
So uh yeah, so yeah, so I'll say my motion in a second. Um so I I I think it's important uh to note that what folks might have read a month and a half ago is not what we are voting on today. Um and if uh the city attorney uh sent a document a few days ago with um two or three page document with about nineteen different changes. Um and those changes are different, what was voted on by the ordinance committee. Um uh are different than what was originally read. Um so with that being said, I think it's great for folks to have an opportunity to read that. Um and I'll make the motion that Counselor Rodriguez had originally made.
There's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Anna Levy. No mo- no discussion on a table matter. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor de La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor Abdo?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counsel President LaPla.
Uh chair votes, yes, motion carries. Um the next item, document one ninety eight twenty handicap parking Ohio Avenue. Clerk, please call the roll. Uh please read the public hearing notice. Thank you.
I apologize. Document number one ninety eight dash twenty notices hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. In a public meeting conducted by electronic means with public viewing, listening, participation and input provided remotely. In compliance with public gathering limitations in effect, the purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information and public input. Concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Lawrence. Be further amended by adding the following new paragraph section ten point thirty six point three four zero of the municipal code handicap parking. To be inserted in the proper alphabetical order. Ohio Avenue North Side from a point one hundred and twenty feet easterly of the intersection of Nezmyth Street to point one hundred and forty feet easterly of the intersection of Nezmyth Street. To the extent that there exist any notices to the contrary, they're hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
The public hearing is now open. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Here and then the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve on whether the body days.
Thank you.
Motion made by Counselor Rodriguez, counse- uh seconded by Counselor Vice President Estela Reyes, uh discussion. Hearing done, uh the clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Selina Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Abdo?
Yes.
Counselor Payano? Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor de La Cruz?
Yeah.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President LaPla.
Yes, the motion carries. The next document is from communications from Mayor, city officials and city attorney. Uh document eighty five twenty, uh clerk, would you please give us an update on this item? From the, from the mayor. This is a veto from the mayor and if the city attorney or some city clerk, please just read the the veto message as to what, why the mayor vetoed this.
Counselor President, my apologies. The um we have a note from the mayor that just read the resident moved to another address and no longer has a need for the handicapped parking in front of this house. And so he had moved to veto this item. Um that's a notice that we received.
And this is handicap parking for one twenty eight Union Street. Uh Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
I was just going to pass the same information that that was the reason that they um Mayor Rascus bittered the document.
Is there a vote to sustain or override the veto? What is the motion?
Motion to sustain.
Motion made is sustained and seconded by Counselor Reyes, uh discussion. Hearing done, uh clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor de La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor Abdo?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Because of President LaPla.
Yes, the motion to sustain the override of the veto passes. Uh vetoes over sustained, excuse me. The next document uh is under committee reports budget and finance committee. Uh this is document uh forty one twenty one, or the vice chair of the budget and finance committee, please give the committee report.
Thank you, Miss President. Um on March tenth, the budget finance committee uh voted by unanimous vote to recommend item number forty one twenty one, appropriation transfer from salary to the energy line item of the Lawrence Public Library in the amount of thirty dollars. And I submit that to you in the form of a motion.
Motion made. Of thirty thousand is corrected. Motion made by Mr. Rabdi and is seconded by Counselor Anna Levy, discussion. Hearing done, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Selina Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Abdo?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor de La Cruz?
Yeah.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Because of President LaPla.
Yes, motion carries. Next document is document, document forty two twenty one, the Oliver Partnership School.
Counselor President.
For what reason? Vice President, rise.
Uh I would like to excuse myself for debating in going to this item, document forty two dash twenty one, Estela Reyes, Counselor District B. Okay.
Duly noted. And this vote, uh Vice Chairman of the Budget Committee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Miss President. Um I would note on this particular item, uh there was much in many briefings with individual counselors. And I would just like to take a moment to uh thank the superintendent and her staff um for the efforts that they made to educate all of us regardless of how we vote this evening on uh the various concepts and the construction method and uh originally the location. With that, I would note that on March tenth, the budget and finance committee voted by unanimous vote. Agenda item number forty two twenty one, the approval of funding for the Oliver Partnership School in the amount of one hundred and thirty two million, three hundred thousand dollars. And I submit that to you in the form of a committee report.
There is a for the committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Giovanni Rodriguez, discussion. The report, uh clerk, please call the roll.
I'll call. Um. Counselor Estela Reyes? Counselor Reyes?
She's recused from this vote.
Oh, I apologize. Counsel Giovanni Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Maria de La Cruz?
I would like to say yes, um but we so I I do have some question.
Continue all the roll call. There'll be another motion. Continue with the roll.
Okay, yes, yes.
Counsel. Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel Abdo?
Yes.
Counsel Reyes, Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counsel President LaPla.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Um what is the pleasure of the um council at this time? What is the motion on the floor?
Make a motion to approve for the purpose of discussion.
Second.
Keep keeping it, keeping in mind, counselors, the the the, this is to order a public hearing.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to order a public hearing on this matter.
Made, motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, uh seconded by Mr. Peano, discussion, Ms. Estela Cruz. Ms. Estela Cruz, do you wish to speak on this matter?
Yes, I suggest a counsel president, that is, uh this motion is to, for a public meeting, and I was for yes.
Okay, this is definitely for a public hearing. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Any other counselors? Hearing done, uh clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes? Selena?
Yes.
Counselor Abdo?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor de La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Estela Reyes? Noted.
Continue.
Because of President LaPla.
Chair votes in the affirmative. The motion passes unanimously. The next document, uh this is order of public hearing, right? So that we public hearing at some point, we realize there's time sensitivities and that public hearing will be done as soon as possible. The next item under ordinance committee reports is document one sixty one nineteen, a four-way stop in the intersection of Bailey and Abbott Streets. Uh Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee, would you please?
Counselor President, that document one sixty nine that nineteen nineteen has been sent out with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I made that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion made by the chair, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel de La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel Abdo? Counsel Abdo? Counsel Selina Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counsel Levy?
Yes.
Counsel President LaPla.
Yes.
Counsel President, I'd like to take item nineteen dash twenty two twenty one um out of old business out of order.
There is a motion to take document nineteen twenty one out of old business. Uh is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, uh discussion, taking this out of order. Hearing done, clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Levy?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counsel Selina Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Abdo? Counsel Abdo?
Continue, please.
Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel de La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Because of President LaPla.
Yes.
Mr. President, I would like to register my vote as a yes vote, please.
Uh duly noted, you're recorded now as a yes vote to take this out of order. Uh is there a motion by me, by any of the city counselors on this item? There needs to be a motion to take this up and we'll need, I believe, six votes to take it out of committee. Is there a motion?
Uh so there's a motion.
Motion, motion, and I think that was seconded by Mr. Gonzalez, is that right? Motion made and seconded. It was counsel, counsel Selena Reyes seconded, uh discussion on moving out of the, out of the budget committees or a second, and there is a second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel de La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel Abdo?
Jane.
Counsel Selina Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counsel Levy?
Yes.
Because of President LaPla.
Chair votes, yes, the required six vote threshold has been met. This motion is, this item is now discharged from the budget committee. Counsel, what is your pleasure at this time?
Um Counsel President, I'd like to make a motion uh to approve. Motion, does it, does it require um anything else, uh public hearing, anything like that?
It does not. Motion has been made by Counselor Peano, and I believe seconded by Counselor Levy, discussion on this matter. Hearing done, clerk, please call the roll.
Um before, before you call the roll call, I would like to recruit myself from this vote.
Mr. Rodriguez is recused, uh duly noted, and.
Mister LaPla, Abdo would request to do the same. I put that in the chat.
And Mr. Abdo is also recused. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Levy?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counsel Selina Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel de La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Estela Reyes?
Yes.
In because of President LaPla.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Motion passes. Going back up to document three eighty three nineteen, fifteen minute parking, Chair of the budget, uh excuse me, Chair of the ordinance committee. What is the?
Document three eighty three dash nineteen, fifty minute parking, uh three thirty. Document three eighty-three dash nineteen, fifteen-minute parking, three thirty-three Lawrence Street. It has been sent out with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing. We made the same motion at the Ordinance Committee level, changing of the address. It's three thirty-three, no one eighty-seven, and I made that as a formal motion.
Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded, and clerk, please, there's a typographical error on that agenda. Please make the change to three 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 Lawrence Street. Motion has been made in second order, to order a public hearing. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Consul Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez?
Yes.
Consul de la Cruz?
Yes.
Consul Payano?
Yes.
Consul Abdu?
Yes.
Consul Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Consul Levy?
Yes.
And Consul President La Plante?
Yes. The motion carries. The next document is four hundred nineteen, four-way stop. Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Wow, four-way stop at Ferry Street and Prosper Street. It has been sent out with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I made that as a formal motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by the Chair, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Consul Levy?
Yes.
Consul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Consul Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Abdu?
Yes.
Consul Payano? Consul Payano?
Yes.
Consul de la Cruz?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez?
Yes.
Consul Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Consul President La Plante?
Yes. The motion carries. Next document is document eleven twenty-one, loading and uploading zones. Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Document one eleven twenty-one, loading and uploading zone to support expansion of revolving test kitchen intersection of Hampshire and Commons Street. It has been sent out with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I made that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Consul Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez?
Yes.
Consul de la Cruz?
Yes.
Consul Payano? Consul Abdu?
Yes.
Consul Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Consul Levy?
Yes.
And Consul President La Plante?
Yes, the motion carries. The next document is document thirty-four twenty-one, a stop sign. Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Stop sign at Carlington Street. It has been sent out with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I made that as a formal motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Reyes, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Consul Levy?
Yes.
Consul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Consul Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Abdu?
Yes.
Consul Payano? Consul Payano?
Yes.
Consul de la Cruz?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez?
Yes.
Consul Estela Reyes?
Yes.
And Consul President La Plante?
Yes. The motion carries. The next document is document forty-three twenty-one, a home role petition for illegal nightclub. Counselor and Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
It has been sent out with favorable recommendation, and I made that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion made by the Chair, seconded by Counselor Gonzalez.
No, it's a home role petition.
Discussion, Counselor Reyes.
No, Counselor Rodriguez was asking if we needed to order a public hearing, and I was just telling him that no, it's a home role petition. We don't need to order a public hearing.
Oh, because when you notice that.
Yes, yeah, I made the motion, but then I corrected after we send it to the, the city attorney.
I second the motion.
The motion is already made, and it's already been rightfully seconded. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Consul Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez?
Yes.
Consul de la Cruz?
Yes.
Consul Payano?
Yes.
Consul Abdu?
Yes.
Consul Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Consul Levy?
Yes.
Consul President La Plante?
Chair votes yes. This matter is passed and has gone to the mayor's office. The next document is under Personnel Committee Reports. Document ten twenty-one, just as a reminder, counselors, I do expect that we'll get a committee report here. Do expect that we're going to probably table this matter right after the committee report has been made so that we can have a more thorough discussion on it on Thursday during our special meeting. So the Chair of the Personnel Committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to thank those that served on the committee and the Personnel Department for their efforts that have gone into the process thus far. With that, on March eighth, the Personnel Committee voted by a four-zero unanimous vote to send this up to the full council as a committee report. Agenda item ten twenty-one, permanent city clerk position. And again, I submit that to you as a committee report. I submit that in the form of a motion.
Motion made. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Estela Reyes. Is there another motion, Mr. Abdu?
Yes, Mr. President, light of the scheduled meeting on Thursday, I would vote to table this matter.
Motion made and tabled and seconded by Counselor Vice President Estela Reyes. There's no discussion on a table matters. Clerk, please call the roll.
Consul Levy?
Yes.
Consul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Consul Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Abdu?
Yes.
Consul Payano?
Yes.
Consul de la Cruz?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez?
Yes.
Consul Estela Reyes?
Yes.
And Consul President La Plante?
Yes. Motion is tabled for next. Counselors always.
I just have a question if I can after make a motion to have the opportunity to one member that would like to be interview the same day that we are going to be having this special meeting. Since we all are present, is that something that we can do it at this level? Or that have to be a motion whenever we have that special meeting?
Madam, Madam Vice President, this, this item is currently tabled for discussion. That is certainly something that can be brought up during the Thursday discussion, whether or not we want to continue or change our process. That certainly can be discussed at the Thursday night meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is a forty-four twenty-one. Appointment of Mr. Adelso Mendez. Mr. Chairman of the Personnel Committee. I do expect that the Chief of Staff is here as well, so if you want to give a committee report of some sort, I do believe that the Chief of Staff is, will be discussing or bringing up, having a comment after you did the report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President. On March eighth, the Personnel Committee voted three nothing unanimously to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation and to waive the thirty days. Item number forty-four twenty-one, the appointment of Mr. Adelso Mendez as an Associate Member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I submit that to you in the form of a committee report.
Second.
The report made by Mr. Rabid, seconded by Counselor Estela Cruz. Discussion, and at this point, I'm going to invite Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Adely Gonzalez, to, I wish, I think he wishes to speak to the, to the, to the council. Mr. Gonzalez, are you with us?
Well, in case he's not, I can, I can discuss the.
He's available now. Mr. Gonzalez, I think you're with us, right?
Yes, I'm here. Can all of you hear me?
Yes, you have the floor, sir.
All right, thank you. So on behalf of the mayor, what we would like to do is, since we weren't able to interview the current individual, and the mayor wants to be, you know, in the same terms with the council, and we would like to do things right, so he would like to withdraw without prejudice the individual in the sense of having, you know, doing things the right way, so we're asking to withdraw the name.
Thank you very much. Mr. Abdu, with that, is there any further discussion on this matter? Mr. Mr. Abdu, do you want to, do you want to withdraw your motion? Or at least make a motion to withdraw that would be a privileged motion at this time?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to withdraw, withdraw my motion.
Good.
Motion made by Mr. Abdu, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez to withdraw. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Consul Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez?
Yes.
Consul de la Cruz?
Yes.
Consul Payano?
Yes.
Consul Abdu?
Yes.
Consul Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Consul Levy?
Yes.
And Consul President La Plante?
Yes, the motion, motion carries. The next item is under old business, document one twenty-five twenty. This is a petition to rename Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. At this point, I just want to make the council aware of two different pieces of information. One is the city attorney drafted a memorandum exclusively for us, for us, for our review and for our internal information with attorney-client privilege. And also, we also received a memorandum from the petitioner, Mr. Frank Bonet, who was the petitioner of this, who, who in his, in his message, message to us, I think was looking to advocate for a, perhaps a rescinding of the public hearing notice because it's not an ordinance. At this point, I am looking for a city counselor to perhaps, who's on the prevailing side, to, number one, rescind the public hearing notice and acknowledge that this is a resolution. And then at that point, maybe we can schedule a time that we can have a discussion regarding the resolution and invite members of the public to join us on both sides so we can make an informed decision. Is there a motion to rescind the public hearing notice?
Yeah. Before we make a motion, I want to clarify something.
What's your motion, Mr. Rodriguez? I'm sorry.
Well, I want to, I want to understand what's the purpose of of doing what you're asking if we're going to invite the public. So the public hearing will serve the purpose of listening, even though this is not a, an ordinance. But instead, we can decide whether or not we're going to do a resolution when we listen to the public. For the public hearings, for the purpose of listening to the public. So if we're going to invite the public as a what? As a public participation, or we're going to invite the public as a, as a public hearing, which they're going to have a lot more rights to speak.
Thank you very much, and I'll take that as a point of proment, sure, for Mr. Rodriguez. And I, and I, I was hoping you'd ask the question, so thank you. The, the answer is, first of all, it's a question regarding the public hearings. We can, as a city council, still be able to invite and bring people in to discuss a matter. It doesn't need, we don't need to spend the two hundred dollars or so that it costs to advertise something when we can simply just say we are going to have a public discussion. And what I want to do, and I think all of us can agree on this, is if we say we're going to have a public discussion, the idea being it will be treated as if it was a public hearing. Public hearing is a word, is a word of art. That means things are in, are in the newspaper, et cetera. In this particular case, we will be able to get information from people and let people know. We can put it on our website. We can put it, we can put it on channel, you know, on Facebook pages or in our social media that we're going to have this discussion. And then we will treat a, a discussion just as if it was a public hearing, like we did earlier this evening. We would open it up for public discussion. People will then have an opportunity to speak on this matter as if it was a public hearing. They would not be having the two and a half minutes or the two-minute restrictions as public participation does. And everything would, and all of their comments will be made, made as part of the record. So everything will be the same with one exception. It's not in the newspaper, and we're not spending two hundred dollars for that, but everything else remains the same. So thank you for, and that's, that's the goal. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, a, a, a quick comment right after your comments. And how we're going to be dealing with the thirty minutes of the participation?
So?
Are we going to just avoid that?
So again, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for that question. This will not be part of public, it can be part of public participation, but I would encourage those who would come to a meeting that they would have, the right time would be during this public discussion so that, that they could, just like a public hearing. Sometimes when people have public hearings, they wish to speak on a matter. We go, you know, you have every right to speak right now, but I think you'll find it more advantageous to speak during the public hearing aspect of it. The same guidance will be given to individuals at the, at that particular council meeting. So tonight, hypothetically, if we choose, and we're going to have that public discussion on a date certain, we can pick that date. Is it the first meeting in April? Is it the second meeting in April? Is it another time? And we can make sure that people know that that will be the night that we are going to have the public discussion on this matter. Make sense?
Counsel President.
Mr. Mr. Peano?
Thank you. I just want to make sure. Are we on item one twenty-five twenty?
We are currently, we are on one twenty-five twenty. I'm just giving some, some information before I'm looking for a motion one way or the other.
Okay, so, so we, so we, so we made a motion to take it out of order.
It's in order.
It's, it's currently in order. So I'd like to make a motion to table?
Second.
There's a motion made to table document number one twenty-five twenty, and it has been properly seconded by Counselor Vice President. No discussion on a table matter. Clerk, please call the roll.
Consul Levy?
Yes.
Consul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Consul Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Abdu?
Yes.
Consul Payano?
Yes.
Consul de la Cruz?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez?
Yes.
Consul Estela Reyes?
Yes.
And Consul President La Plante?
Now, the motion carries. The next document, is there anything under table matters that anybody wants?
Mr. President?
Counselor Levy?
Yeah, to you. I would like to take item one fifty-one twenty for we drop, out of order for we drop.
There is a motion to take document one fifty-one twenty out of tabled matters for the purposes of withdrawing. And who's making the second?
I seconded.
And seconded by the Vice President. Any discussion on this matter?
One fifty-one twenty.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No, no, I just wanted to know the item which one it was.
Okay. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Consul Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez?
Yes.
Consul de la Cruz?
Yes.
Consul Payano? Consul Payano?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Consul Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Consul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Consul Levy?
Yes.
And Consul President La Plante?
Yes. Are there any other matters that the membership wishes to take off the tabled items? I will ask if someone wouldn't mind taking off document two sixteen twenty-eight Phillips Street. Is, would somebody want to take that off the table for the Chair?
Motion to take document two sixteen dash twenty out of table?
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Roll call, please. Clerk, please call the roll. Or is there a discussion on this? We're going to have the vote here in a second. We're going to have the vote here in a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Fonsela Levy?
Yes.
Fonsela Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fonsela Salina Reyes?
Yes.
Fonsela Abdo?
Yes.
Fonsela Payano?
Yes.
Fonsela De La Cruz?
Yes.
Fonsela Rodriguez?
Yes.
Fonsela Estela Reyes?
Yes.
In Casa Presidente and the plant.
Chair votes the affirmative. The Chair is now looking for a motion to order a public hearing to withdraw, or actually to withdraw a handicap parking placard. The Chair has received a request from a constituent that this is no longer needed and would need a, you know, order a public hearing on that. So is there a motion with?
Motion to order a public hearing, a handicap parking at eighty-eight Phillips Street and to be deleted. And that's the motion to order a public hearing.
And seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, discussion. Hearing none clerk, please call.
Mister President.
Who just said, Counselor Levy?
Yes. So it was for deleted and now we're going to order a public hearing.
Yes.
Correct. The city attorney's office opined that to put a handicap parking placard requires a public hearing. To withdraw a handicap parking spot also requires a public hearing. So it goes both ways.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none clerk, please call the roll.
Fonsela Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Fonsela Rodriguez?
Yes.
Fonsela De La Cruz?
Present.
Fonsela Payano?
Yes.
Fonsela Abdo?
Yes.
Fonsela Salina Reyes?
Yes.
Fonsela Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fonsela Levy?
Yes.
Casa Presidente and the plant.
Chair votes in the affirmative. The Chair is also looking for one last item off of table matters, and that is thirty-six twenty. That is the, that is the east side of Osgood Street. Looking to take that off the table matters, please.
Motion to take document thirty-six dash twenty out of table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Abdo, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Fonsela Levy?
Yes.
Fonsela Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fonsela Salina Reyes?
Yes.
Fonsela Abdo?
Yes.
Fonsela Payano?
Yes.
Fonsela De La Cruz?
Yes.
Fonsela Rodriguez?
Yes.
Fonsela Estela Reyes?
Yes.
In Casa Presidente and the plant.
Chair votes in affirmative. After the last meeting, the city council instructed that you have a discussion with the applicant or the butters over there, which the Chair did do, and have a conversation regarding that and is reporting back that the person who spoke at the public hearing is okay with this current configuration. Now that the individual understands the situation and we are working on other issues that deal with Merrimack Street as well. So I'm looking for a motion to approve document thirty, thirty.
Thirty-six twenty, motion to approve document thirty-six twenty.
Second.
And second by Mister Gonzalez, discussion. Hearing none clerk, please call the roll.
Fonsela Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Fonsela Rodriguez?
Yes.
Fonsela De La Cruz?
Yes.
Fonsela Payano?
Yes.
Fonsela Abdo?
Yes.
Fonsela Salina Reyes?
Yes.
Fonsela Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fonsela Levy?
Yes.
Casa Presidente and the plant.
Chair votes in affirmative. The motion passes. Thank you to the members of the council for that. That, any other new, any other table matters? Hearing now, we will move on to new business. Document forty-six twenty-one, a request to expend grant funds, social equity access funds of ten thousand dollars put on the Assistant Library Director Abu Farah. That is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document forty-seven twenty-one, National Grid petition covering the installation of underground facilities at Essex Street and Amesbury Street, put on by Dave Johnson Supervisor of the District Design National Grid. That is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document forty-eight twenty-one, fifteen-minute parking in front of Four Conduit Street, put on by our colleague, City Councilor Selena Reyes. That is going before the Ordinance Committee. Document forty-nine twenty-one, a proposed minor reorganization Lawrence Planning Board Term Schedule and Member Replacement Policy put on by Dan McCarthy, Land Use Planner. That is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document fifty-two twenty-one, Surplus Declaration on Wellness Street Tax Map one seventy lot one fourteen by Angie Bill Moretta, the Asset Manager. That is going to the Housing Committee. Document fifty-one twenty-one, the appointment Ezra Encarnacion as Business and Economic Development Director, put on by Mayor Kendros Vazquez. That is going to the Personnel Committee. Fifty-two twenty-one, appointment of Felix Garcia Junior as a City Engineer, put on by Mayor Kendros Vazquez, is going to the Personnel Committee. Fifty-three twenty-one, appointment of Milagros Puelo as the Commissioner of Water and Sewer, put on by Mayor Kendros Vazquez, is going to the Personnel Committee. Fifty-four twenty-one, acceptance of funds relating to Safe and Successful Youth Initiative, put on by the Director of Support Services for the Police Department, Eileen Brunel. That is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Fifty-five twenty-one, the acceptance of funds relating to the Stanton Foundation, the second dog, up to fourteen thousand, again, by the Director of Support Services, Eileen Brunel. That is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. At this point, I'm going to be asking Chairs of when their next committee meetings are going to take place. Mister Abdo, Personnel, and then Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I propose Monday evening, the twenty-second at seven PM for Personnel. And I would propose seven PM on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, for Budget and Finance.
Very good. Housing Committee Chair, Mister Rodriguez.
On the Monday, on the twenty-second at seven PM? Oh, excuse me, Counsel Abdo, you actually took Monday for Personnel?
Yes, sir.
So we only have one matter at the Housing Committee, so we can start at six-thirty, if that's possible.
Sure.
Is there a member of the Housing Committee available for Monday at six-thirty instead of seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got.
All right, we'll move forward Monday at six-thirty.
Excellent, very good. Thank you, Mister Rodriguez, Mister Chairman. Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee, Mister Reyes.
Next Tuesday, the twenty-third, seven o'clock.
Very good. I don't believe there's any other public safety. I think it's the only little wild card that's left. We should be taking out charter review from this, from this point going forward. That charter review expired as of December thirty-first of last year. Mister Payano, anything on public safety?
There are no items for public safety.
Okay, that is it for our meeting this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. In discussion, hearing none clerk, please call the roll.
Fonsela Levy?
Yes.
Fonsela Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fonsela Salina Reyes?
Yes.
Fonsela Abdo?
Yes.
Fonsela Payano?
Yes.
Fonsela De La Cruz?
Yes.
Fonsela Rodriguez?
Yes.
Fonsela Estela Reyes?
Yes.
In Casa Presidente and the plant.
Chair votes yes. Meeting is adjourned. We will see every one of you, or on the next, I'm sorry, the next city council meeting is a special one on Thursday. Look forward to seeing you then. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.